During these unprecedented times in our nation's capital, Hawaii voters will be electing two U.S. representatives. In the race for the District 1 seat, incumbent Democrat Ed Case is being challenged by Republican Ron Curtis. And the Honolulu City Council will have a new look next year with three seats still up for grabs. Hear from the top vote-getters who advanced from the primary election for the District 7 seat, Jacob Aki and Radiant Cordero. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Election 2020 on Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Yanji Denise. We're just days away from the general election, and while many Hawaii voters may have already mailed in their ballots, some may still have questions about the candidates. Coming up, we'll hear from the candidates in the race for the Honolulu City Council District 7 seat. But first, the race to serve Hawaii in our nation's capital, representing the first congressional district in the U.S. House. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email, call, or tweet your questions, and you'll find a livestream of this program at PBSHawaii.org and on the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. Now to the candidates running to be our U.S. representative in District 1, which covers urban Oahu from east Honolulu to Kapolei in west Oahu and Mililani in central Oahu. Both candidates are appearing via the Internet tonight. Democratic incumbent Ed Case was elected to this seat two years ago. Born and raised in Kilo, he's a lawyer and previously served in the U.S. House District 2 seat as well as the State House. His opponent is Republican Ron Curtis, who advanced from the primary. For over 35 years, he worked for the federal government as a contractor, as a systems engineer. He's now retired and living on Kauai. Thank you both for being here tonight. Mr. Curtis, as the challenger, I want to start with you. The U.S. death toll from COVID-19 now stands at more than 228,000 with nearly 9 million Americans infected. Should President Donald Trump be imposing stricter guidelines when it comes to stopping the spread of the virus?
Yeah. My statement on that is I think he's actually stood up and stood for the 10th Amendment, leaving that to the states to actually handle themselves, and some states have handled it better than others. Personally, here in Hawaii, I would like to see them make use of the available hotel space and isolate those people who are sick and keep them protected while we send everyone else back to work. I mean, the latest CDC numbers show that you're really not affected much unless you're over 70 or have underlying conditions. So we can use that and, from a system engineering standpoint, put everyone else back to work, protect those who are at risk, get the herd immunity up, which is what the vaccine will do once we get a vaccine, but we can do that much quicker. And we can actually accelerate the Sweden model and get back to more lives as usual. Right now, personally here on Kauai, a lot of small businesses have shut down permanently. So right now, the response by the state, the cure is worse than the disease based on lockdown. So, thank you.
Congressman Case, what's your response to that?
When you have a national crisis, you don't handle it on a state-by-state basis. When you have a war, you don't turn it over to the states to prosecute it on a state-by-state basis. When you have an economic meltdown, recession, you don't turn it over to the states. You forge a national response. You coordinate it across the entire country. You set national policies. You set national requirements and, yes, restrictions where public health requires those. You set conditions under which businesses can reopen. You set provisions for how critical personal protective equipment is distributed fairly. You set national budgets and policies to expend money like the CARES Act, which I was very, very proud to contribute to in the U.S. Congress. So, you know, the fact is that the president's approach, which was to deny that there was a crisis to start with, and then, once he got an inkling that there may have been a crisis, to turn it over to the states and really, basically, walk away from it on a national level, that just made things worse. So absolutely, there needs to be a national plan. We have not had a national plan yet, and I'm hoping we will have a national plan very, very soon.
Should that national plan include something like a nationwide mask mandate where we have uniform guidelines across the board? Or do you agree with Mr. Curtis that there should be some flexibility state to state?
Well, I agree with Mr. Curtis that there should be some flexibility state to state. So I think that states definitely have a part to play. And I think that there is a great advantage in having states experiment with different approaches. For example, Hawaii's own response in the early months of COVID-19 indicated that we had the right approach. We had one of the best public health results in the entire country. Now, that came in at great economic cost, but nonetheless, I think that we should have had that flexibility. But there should be a base national standard that states can then deviate from, just as, for example, we're doing right here in the state of Hawaii, where we have some statewide requirements. And if a county wants to take a different approach, and counties have taken a different approach, they should be able to, as long as it's public health first.
Mr. Curtis, I'm interested to know what your ideas are around a nationwide mask mandate, given especially that now Hawaii has opened itself up to trans-Pacific travel. We have visitors who come in, and they may have different standards in their home states. We see plenty of folks walking around here, perhaps not wearing a mask, maybe simply because they don't realize that that is the standard that we have here. Would it help to have a nationwide mask mandate?
Yeah. I don't think you could do a nationwide mask-wide mandate. I think, as we're describing here, states are different. Hawaii is completely different than Iowa in how you address things, are completely different based on the state's configuration, the state's location, and their demographics, and their dynamics for their state. I think the national plan that President Trump rolled out was where if the governor needed assistance, he would send them ventilators, he would send them the mercy ship, he would send them the federal assistance as they requested, based on the needs of their state. I thought that was the right approach. Here in Hawaii, I think the end game is you realize that you can try to hide from COVID-19 as long as you want. We can keep it out, but to actually open up for business, you've got to realize that COVID-19 is still out there. So the only way to achieve that, or achieve going back to business as close to normal, is by achieving a herd immunity, whether that's through a vaccine or through actually letting people go back to work who are less at risk than those who are at risk, and you can get your state back to working. Right now, here on Kauai, there's been no COVID-19 deaths. The Garden Island newspaper here on Kauai, there have been nine suicides related to the isolation here. So we have a problem with some of these solutions. So I think we need to do better. So, thank you.
Let's move on to the CARES Act funding. Do you think that Congress, Mr. Case, we'll start with you on this. Do you think Congress should pass another stimulus bill? And what should CARES Act 2, if you will, what should that look like?
Absolutely. CARES Act 1, almost $3 trillion of federal funding throughout the country was critical to basic survival during those first few months, survival of the healthcare systems throughout our country, survival of economies throughout our country, basic necessities that people just didn't have the resources to cover. That was absolutely critical, and I think we did exactly the right thing. This is the time when you need your federal government. We can debate about when it's appropriate for your federal government to step into situations or to run the show, and when it's appropriate for states to have flexibility. But in a crisis, again, the federal government is where we need to turn to for the resources necessary to get ourselves out of a crisis like this. And so, yes, I do believe that the CARES Act money was critical, and it is exhausted. And we're still in this crisis. We're in a third peak right now. We're seeing some of the highest records since this started, highest per-day records in the United States. Just a few days ago, states like Florida and Texas going through a third peak. It's clear that we're not out of the woods with COVID-19, no matter how much anybody wants to pretend otherwise. And we need the federal government to, again, provide the funding, whether it's small business-related, economic assistance to families, unemployment, and really just covering the basics so we can get stable again.
Mr. Curtis, what's your view? What should a second CARES package, if there is one, what should that look like?
Yeah. I tend to agree with Ed Case on what you said about that. Here in Hawaii, we really need the money to go to the small businesses. Here in Hawaii, I think the federal government did their job at delivering the first CARES Act, and locally here, the state government did a very poor job by getting that money out to the people who needed it. I think there's still hundreds of millions that haven't been allocated yet, and we have small businesses that are shutting down forever. Here where I live in Kalahaoa, Kalahua Steak and Ribs back in July, it shut down for good. Even big chain restaurants, Ruth Chris and Kaloa here on Kauai, they shut down for good because this money is just not getting to them. So we need to improve the processes about getting the CARES Act money to those who are in need. And I think we need to put more onus on people with their individual salary to decide how to best spend money for themselves and their families. Here in the state, when they passed out these Visa cards for spending $500 at restaurants, I said, "Well, why didn't you just give this to the people that are waiting for their unemployment and let them decide on the best spend that $500 for themselves and their families, to best serve their families?" So I think we need to actually shift a little way from government serving the people and giving back to the people, a little more of the individual salary to actually serve themselves and self-govern. Thank you.
There's a question that came in, and we encourage you, of course, to tweet us and use Facebook, use email, call us. Let us know what your questions are for the candidates tonight. Chris on Facebook says, and Congressman Case, we'll start with you. "What does Black Lives Matter mean to you, and how will you, as a congressman, focus on delivering civil rights for all Americans and specifically Hawaii residents?"
Well, Black Lives Matters stands number one for the prospect that we are all entitled to live in this incredible country. Inequality with opportunity, with compassion for each other, with tolerance for each other, with non-discrimination, so that each of us, each of us and all of us can take advantage of the incredible gifts that this country has handed down through generations that are enshrined in our constitution and our democracy. And Black Lives Matter says that that promise has not been kept. It has not been kept, and we cannot avoid that. We cannot look throughout our country today and ignore the fact that there is, in fact, systemic racism that exists in too much of our country, too much of the institutions of our country. Now, that doesn't mean that there are good people, that there aren't good people throughout our entire country, including our police, including here in Hawaii, who are trying to do a good job. But it is very clear that there is racism in our system that sometimes we don't even recognize. Sometimes we don't even know enough to act upon. And Black Lives Matter means that we don't have the option of walking away from that anymore or ignoring it. We have to stare it straight in the face. We have to have that honest approach, that honest recognition, that honest reconciliation, followed up by action. In the U.S. House, we took action on Black Lives Matter when we passed the George Floyd Policing Act, which asked for reasonable reforms in our police forces, not, by the way, defunding the police. That is something that was put out there that is incorrect, and I don't support defunding our police. But I support looking at the institutions of our government, the institutions of our society, and asking ourselves, where does racism still exist? Where does discrimination still exist? And what do we, as a people, need to do to rid it once and for all?
Mr. Curtis, do you agree that systemic racism exists in our country?
Okay. I'll go farther. I think there's some bigotry, systemic bigotry, just in our country, in various regions and different locations, based on what those regions and locations are. So me personally, I was raised as a military brat. I moved seven times before seventh grade. When I was raised, I was raised colorblind. My friends, my classmates, my teammates were from all races, all ethnic backgrounds, all religions. And while I did not experience or see, I have a lot of the knowledge about what other people experience with systemic racism out there, I did experience where we need to be. So we need to get back to where we live, like here in Hawaii. Hawaii has got such a unique, diverse, and rich culture, and because we have respect and harmony with each other, we can actually coexist. I mean, I have friends here in Hawaii from all ethnic backgrounds. They're Christian, Jinto, Taoist, Buddhist, Muslim, every Jewish, every race, and we all get along because we all respect each other. We need to get to that point in time. I can say I need to sit and listen to a lot of people that experience the systemic racism so I can understand where they're coming from, but where I've lived and living here in Hawaii, I don't see that. But, thank you.
Well, on the subject of getting along, let's stay with you, Mr. Curtis. It does seem that our Congress is more divided than ever. Our politics are so divisive, I think there's going to be a lot of tough Thanksgivings this year. How would you work with colleagues on the other side of the aisle?
Yeah. I don't, I'm running as a Republican because I'm an extreme fiscal conservative. I believe the smaller, more efficient government is the most effective government. The government is supposed to protect our security, so it's not supposed to make people currently and escapelessly dependent on government. So issues out there, I'm running on some issues, one of which is the elimination of omnibus bills. If I get elected, I will reach out to Congressman Tim Ryan from Ohio. He's a Democrat. He's running on a, or he's got a bill or a platform up there, but the Real Food Connection about spending local buy-in, local, and taking down the omnibus farm bill that focuses on the most successful and the most profitable large farming issue, and make it more focused on the smaller Ohana-based farming issue like we have here in Hawaii. So we have a common issue, we have a common concern, even though our methodologies are different, our goals are the same. Thank you.
Congressman Case, you've been there now. How is it to work with your colleagues across the aisle, and have you been successful in actually finding some common ground?
Well, let me start by saying I'm a proud Democrat. I have been throughout my political life. I have believed in the principles of my party, equality, opportunity, compassion, tolerance. I have stood for them, and I believe that in many areas, my party has had the better policy answers for our country. Our "for the people" agenda, for example, lays out about eight or 10 areas that I think we have the better solution here, whether it be infrastructure spending, or firearm safety, or any number of other areas, climate change, reform in campaign spending, and lobbying, I could go on. But I recognize, and always have, that the folks I represent, and I represent 750,000 people today, and I'm their only representative in the United States House of Representatives, and I've known darn well that those folks are all over the place politically, yet I have the obligation to try to listen, to understand, and to agree where I can and to act where I can, and I carry that over into Congress. So this is not about what I would do, it's what I have done in my congressional experience and previously. So I look for the opportunities to cooperate across the aisle where I can. I take the partisan votes where there's a very clear policy choice between the two parties. I'll make that choice. I believe that that's my job. But where that is not the situation, if I can find a way to work with the other side, I will, and I'll give you three quick examples. First of all, I started this year the very first-ever Congressional Pacific Islands Caucus, focusing on the Pacific. I did that with a number of Republicans who were my co-chairs of that caucus. We did that together. That's a nonpartisan caucus. And number two, I just introduced a major tourism initiative to get our federal government much more involved in the recovery of travel and tourism, so critical for our state, much less our country. That's done on a bipartisan basis. Republicans and Democrats are on that bill. I just wrote an op-ed in our leading congressional newspaper with Mr. Sullivan, Senator from Alaska, a Republican. And then, third, I will just say that I've focused on the budget stabilization, federal deficits and debts, with the leading Republican on the Budget Committee. So those are the three examples.
Okay. And I have to let Mr. Curtis get in here, too. We want to talk about the rail project. Obviously, this is something that is way over budget, and the city is relying on federal funding to actually get it done and get it up and running. Mr. Curtis, would you help Honolulu get more federal funding for the rail project, and how do you propose doing that if so?
Yeah. First, I worked with NASA, and I did a lot of internal ISO 9,000 forensic audits, especially for NASA Shuttle Program. First thing I would do is to do an ISO 9,000 forensic audit on the rail project, on HEART, their quality management system, all of their partners' quality assurance plans, to find out what metrics and what quality records they were using that failed to keep that program on schedule and on budget. So we need to root out what the problems are before we throw more federal dollars. Once we do that, once you come with a plan forward, I am in favor of more additional federal dollars, once we have a solid plan for moving that project forward. I'm in favor of rail. I'm not in favor of this completely mismanaged project here on Oahu. So I don't think I've seen a work-managed project than rail on Oahu.
Congressman Case, is there a path to get more federal funding for this project for Honolulu?
Well, first of all, I would say that I agree with much of what Ron just said. My job is to represent Hawaii in the U.S. Congress. I'm not the governor, I'm not the mayor. Those decisions need to be made locally, but I do try to support the governors. The mayors are leaders at the state and county levels in the initiatives that they want to take, and of course, the rail is a state and county primarily, but now state also project. The challenge we have right now is to preserve the federal funding that has already been appropriated. So my major challenge going forward in Washington, D.C., is to ensure that the second half of the first $1.6 billion of assistance to the rail project from the federal government actually is paid. That's at risk right now because of the failure of the P-3 project. And HEART needs to come up with a financial plan that will make sense to the Federal Transit Administration, the FTA, who is responsible for doling out that additional $800 million, which is critical. So that's my number-one challenge right now and has been throughout my entire first term and will remain that way. The additional federal funding is going to depend, as Ron said, on a good, solid financial plan that we can sell when credibility is scarce with the FTA, frankly, right now.
And perhaps so is funding. Kara has a question specifically for Mr. Curtis. She says, "Why does Ron Curtis continue to share QAnon and other far-right conspiracy theories rooted in white supremacist movements? Although he says he does not endorse them, they are proven to be wrong and are dangerous to promote." Can you talk a little bit about this? We did see some Facebook posts that you had shared that were approved to be somewhat controversial.
Yeah. I've been reached by that by many news agencies. Some people, like Nick Groob on Civil Beat, actually covered it. To be honest, I listen to everyone, just like Ed Case had mentioned before, that if elected, you don't just represent the people that voted for you, you represent the other people in your district, those that voted for you, those that voted for someone else, or those that didn't vote at all. So those people have real issues and real concerns. They may go a little too far sometimes, but I will listen to them all, and I will respond to them all. I've listened, in 2018, I had over 3,000 Bernie Sanders supporters, and I listened to them. I actually held a town hall with them, and I got 3,000 to support me because I solved their issues with ethical capitalism, not democratic socialism. So we need to listen to all the voters. I don't promote any of these conspiracy theories, but some of these things, if you go back, and this isn't just me, this goes back, let me read you something from John F. Kennedy from 1961. It says, "JFK Exposes Ruthless Conspiracy, The President in a Press Speech." It says, "For we are opposed around the world by a monolithic and ruthless conspiracy that relies on covert means for expanding its sphere of influence on infiltration instead of invasion, on subversion instead of elections, on intimidation instead of free choice, on guerrillas by night instead of armies by day. It is a system which conspired vast human and material resources into the building of a tightly knit, highly efficient machine that combines military, diplomatic, intelligence, economic, scientific, and political operations." This was in 1961. I mean, stuff is out there. The QAnon stuff is more of like a political treasure hunt to try to do this fact finding. This isn't new. I mean, it goes back to 1961. That's before I was born, and it's similar, same things I'm saying now with QAnon that JFK said back then.
We've got less than 10 minutes, so I want to get to some more questions. Representative Case, if Democrats win the White House and the Senate, what are your views on stacking the Supreme Court?
Well, I'm going to have to think that one through. You know, this is a major initiative that I really have not sat down and asked myself the pros and cons, and I do do that. I do try to analyze very, very carefully, and I do try to listen to folks out there, and I haven't had a chance to do that. My initial reaction, though, is that I would probably not be supportive of that unless there was a darn good reason, because frankly, I don't see the end of it. I don't like the fact that Justice Barrett was confirmed and appointed to the Supreme Court. I disagree with that strongly. I believe that that was wrong. But it happened, and it was within our constitution. And the fact is that what I don't want to get into is a situation where every time somebody doesn't like a Supreme Court justice, they stack the court a little bit more, and where does it end? Do we end at 15, 17, 20 Supreme Court justices? I mean, I regret what has happened, but I'm not sure on an initial reaction to it that that's the right way to go.
Mr. Curtis, what's your view on the recent SCOTUS nomination and confirmation?
Yeah. I mean, it was within the Constitution. I'm a constitutional originalist, so I'm in favor of who they selected. I think she's a very good candidate. And I've seen a lot of discussion about constitutional originalism. It's not textualism, like some people have said. I think I actually wrote a piece back to the Supreme Court when Neil Gorsuch ruled on the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and he redefined some of the words in that act and effectively redefined the legislation that should be left in the hands of Ed Case and the members of Congress. So I'm a constitutional originalist in that you have the law of grammar, and you have to interpret historical documents with the meanings and definitions of the words at the time the document was written. You can't redefine the words because you then change the legislation. That is originalism. That is constitutional originalism. So I agree with Ed a little bit on the process, but if you want to change that process, you actually need to change the Constitution, which you can do. Article 5 of the Constitution, you can change that rules to limit when and where you cannot appoint a new Supreme Court justice if you think it's too close to an election. Thank you.
Mr. Curtis, I want to stay with you, and this perhaps is our last question, depending on timing here. But Hawaii is doing its first mail-in general election. Do you believe that mail-in voting is secure? We've heard the president say otherwise.
I'm going to say, for the most part, here, secure. We actually challenged the Board of Elections here in Hawaii just because they don't scrub their rolls, and they send out all these ballots. We're guessing there's 50,000 to 100,000 people on their roll that they sent out ballots to that don't exist in Hawaii, whether they moved away or whether they passed away. So if we can actually, here in Hawaii, go back to scrubbing those rolls, make sure that the people in the ballots, the ballots are actually still alive or still in Hawaii, I think it's a feasible system. I know here on Kauai, we did mail-in balloting for the first time in 2018, and now they extended it statewide. But in the primary, I had over a dozen people sending ballots to family members that were deceased. So I think there's an issue that we need to cover. Once we cover that, I think it's fine.
Mr. Case, you'll get the last word tonight. What are your thoughts on mail-in voting? Now that we're doing it statewide, is this a secure way to do this?
Yes, it is, and that's not a guess. That's because we have been doing mail-in balloting for decades now in this country. States out there like Oregon have been doing it for a long, long time. There have been major, major studies that have taken a look at mail-in balloting throughout our country, taken them apart systematically and analyzed the data, and have found minuscule fraud in the system, minuscule. So for anybody, much less a president, to stand up there and say that mail-in balloting, which we've already seen in Hawaii, has magnified the number of folks that have gone to the polls, record, record turnout, which we should all be incredibly happy about, I can't agree with that at all. We should enhance mail-in balloting. If there are problems with it, sure, we should take care of it, but those problems have come nowhere close to what the president has tried to tell the American people is a problem.
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen, both, for being here. We, of course, want to thank the candidates for U.S. House District 1, Democrat incumbent Ed Case and his Republican challenger, Ron Curtis. We'll be right back, but first, this Hiki No story from students at Aliamanu Middle School that first aired in 2011.
Fort Island, it's a place of mystery. It was quite important to the ancient Hawaiians, known then as Moku Ume Ume. The island eventually came under control of the U.S. military. Most prominent and well-known of its recent history is the attack on Pearl Harbor. Nowadays, those turbulent times seem far removed, as Fort Island is now part of Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam and home to dozens of military families. To visitors and new residents, Fort Island housing seems like a typical neighborhood. However, as you roam around the area, there are reminders that you are living on a military base rich in history. Although this makes Fort Island an interesting place in itself, life goes on for those who live there. For a visitor to Fort Island, you get the feeling like you're living in a small town. For kids that live there, finding things to do might be a challenge. The Housing Authority tries to make things as convenient as possible.
It's all right. There's rope swing that people go and swing on, and there's a pool. There's a bunch of good skate spots, so it's fun. I've lived on Fort Island for two years. It's, I mean, it's like anywhere else, but you're trapped by water.
Whenever you want to go anywhere off of Fort Island, you have to go off of the bridge. And so the bridge itself is like a mile long, so it takes a long time to get anywhere. But it's also fun because we have our own island to live on, and there's a lot of wreckage from Pearl Harbor, so it's cool to go around and look around. So that's cool. It's good.
If they feel a little isolated now, it was even more so before the Fort Island Bridge was opened in 1998. Officially known as the Admiral Clary Bridge, it is a much more convenient way to travel than the ferry that brought people and goods to and from the island.
There was a ferry that was in operation, and I rode that ferry Monday through Friday, sometimes on Saturday and Sunday, back and forth. It was the only other means to get to Fort Island for the residents that live there and for the people who work there. I worked at the Naval Brig, which is a corrections facility.
Because the ferry was the only method of transportation, residents and workers there would have to plan their whole day around the ferry schedule. If you missed the last boat from the Honolulu side, you couldn't get back to the island until the next day. There are plans to expand the military housing on the island, along with other improvements to the military installation. However, as long as access is restricted and efforts continue to preserve its history through museums and memorials, living on Fort Island will continue to remain low-key. This is Cindy Chardella from Aliamanu Middle School, reporting for Hiki No.
Welcome back. Welcome back. Honolulu City Councilmember Joey Manahan has reached his term limit. The top two candidates from the primary advanced to run for the District Seven seat, which includes Kalihii, Mapuna Puna, Salt Lake, Foster Village, and Sand Island. Radiant Cordero grew up in the Kalihii and Salt Lake Moana Lua communities. She's a graduate of Mid-Pacific Institute and UH Mauna Noah. She's currently the Chief of Staff of Councilmember Manahan. She's also a member of the Neighborhood Security Watch groups in Kalihii and Salt Lake. Jacob Aki is a lifelong resident of the Kalihii area and grew up in public housing. He's a graduate of Kamehameha Schools, UH Mauna Noah, and George Washington University. He's the Chief of Staff, our State Senator Kalani English, and is on the Kalihii Palama Neighborhood Board. Thank you for being here tonight, socially distanced and masked up, but we hope to have a lively conversation nonetheless.
Thank you.
We're all used to this now. Let's dive right into the tiered system the mayor Kirk Caldwell has outlined. Do you support that tiered, the four-tiered system for reopening the city?
I really wish that the tiered system, as well as metrics, because would have come up, come up earlier during the pandemic, because a lot of the times, the communication has been absolutely confusing, but especially for our communities. Our community in Kalihii to Salt Lake are essential workers, are frontline workers and more. And so knowing what to do and when you can do it has been really tough. So that's why, you know, both in my capacity with Councilmember Manahan's office, but also on my personal, in my personal life, I wanted to make sure that I not only value the communications of our district, that we provided them the information, and by providing them the information through flyer, I guess, leaflet dropping, I'm sorry, canvassing the information, because a lot of, a lot of them do not have the time or opportunity to, you know, watch the news or, you know, read the newspaper. So making sure that everyone's abilities, accessibilities, and ability, and availabilities are taken into consideration.
Do you think that the new mayor should keep the tier system?
I think the metrics and basing our opening and reopening by data should be taken into consideration. But I think that what, I think that the tiered system can be released a little more, yes.
What's your view on the mayor's system?
Yeah, you know, I really think that it should have come a lot earlier in this pandemic, but I do agree that it's a system that works because it's data-driven. And I've had similar issues where residents in our community had questions, they had concerns. And as we are a community of essential workers, early on, guidance from the city and state wasn't clear. I'm glad to see that the city has moved forward with this tiered system. And as I said, it's important that our response efforts are data-driven. But I do agree that I think there needs to be some consistency from the Caldwell administration onto the next mayor, because we need to make sure that we have consistent guidelines and that when the new mayor comes in on January 1st, that there isn't any confusion during the transition. But I do agree, yes, I think it should have come a lot earlier, but it's better late than never, and we are making great progress.
You know, Oahu overall is making great progress when it comes to the number of people infected with the coronavirus, but Kalihii still has a high number of cases. So what needs to be done to stop the spread in that particular community?
Sure. You know, I think early on, there also should have been a lot of efforts to outreach to our immigrant population. We have a large number of Filipino, Marshallis, Micronesian, and another, a bunch of other different ethnic groups who really didn't know what to do because a lot of the guidance, a lot of the policies that were being forth, put forth, wasn't translated into their language. So many of them didn't realize what policies were in place, that you had to wear masks, what were open, what wasn't. So I think, you know, as we move forward, we, we need to make sure that this information is accessible to everybody and translated into those different languages. But it's hard because as we have a high cost of living, we have multi-generational homes. So we have two or three generations living under one house. And many of these people who have tested positive are not showing any symptoms. And because many of them are essential workers, they're going out to work every single day, increasing the possibility of being exposed to the virus. So I think, being that we are a community of working-class citizens, we are a community of multi-generational, multi-generational families, it's a part of who we are. But I think, you know, those are some of the challenges that we've had to face during this entire pandemic.
I too think that along with those challenges, but that is also key as to, they say, it's, we're stronger together and we'll get through this together. And as, in the councilmember's office, as a councilmember, as a hopefully elected councilmember, as well as, as a community member, I, I know that we all will work together to work with our community health centers to make sure that we know who our key stakeholders are to help us outreach. You know, these people, these organizations can be from anyone from your mom and pop shops who can give out the information that way, to people who you pass by on the street every single day and to the people that you take the bus with. And so making sure that all of those people are taken into consideration when you're working with your community, as well as our landlords and especially our schools. So I think moving forward, moving together and working together is exceptionally key.
Well, one thing that the, that the council is going to have to face is the fact that the rail project is in a really tough financial position and the city's budget is in a very tough financial position as well. So what needs to be done to finish the project and where do you support it actually ending?
So I support the rail project ending at Alamoana, but of course, the full funding grant agreement. I'm worried about our Dillingham corridor and as well as the P3. I believe that there are going to be added risks and costs if we do not figure out our city, our city center utilities relocation. And hopefully, if elected as councilmember, I will make sure to fight for those resources and that impact along the Dillingham corridor, but also by Halava, by Makalapa Gate and by Radford Drive will be fought for because we need to make sure that we are not going to have to pay back all those millions upon millions of federal dollars if we don't fulfill that full funding grant agreement.
What's your view on how rail can move forward, given the financial challenges right now?
Sure. You know, I think definitely the financial situation with rail is something that we need to figure out. For me, I think the best way to move forward is to continue with the public-private partnership. I think it's unfortunate that the city, particularly the mayor, decided to withdraw from the P3 partnership. Because for me, when I look at it, what the P3 offers is it, it offers a 30-year predictability of what our costs are going to be moving forward. I think the mayor may have jumped the gun because the procurement process wasn't over yet. The bids have come in, but they were going through both the city and Hart's procurement process and kind of looking at those bids. You know, we don't know what those bids were, you know. And I disagree. You know, the mayor said that the process was being secret, but when you look at any public works procurement process across the country, the procurement process is kept between the evaluation committee. And because you had Hart and city as joint partners on this, each had their own evaluation committee. You know, so I think there are a lot of intricacies and complex processes that led to that decision. But I hope that with the next mayor and the next council, we can hopefully see the city return to the P3 process.
Do you have any preference as to who the next mayor should be?
I do not. I think both are fine candidates. I think they each bring different sets of talents to the table. And I'm willing to work with either one of them. I think no matter who is elected to the council, we're going to have five new seats. And doesn't matter who's elected to the mayor's office, we all need to work together. These are unprecedented times and we all need to be on the same page and not fighting one another.
I would like to add on the P3, though, that we all need to be, as just Jacob just said, we need to be on the same page. And as we are moving through these contracts, we have to make sure that we have our taxpayers, our residents, and, you know, just the overall project in mind as we are moving through to, as a supporter of rail and for the full funding grant agreement from East Capleto to Alamoana. But especially, we have eight out of the 21 rail stations. We need to make sure that what is happening is happening right and that we can make sure that accountability is all there out on the table.
Do you have a preference who, who becomes the mayor in the, in the general election?
My only preference is that they are willing to be open to the five new councilmembers and the rest of the nine councilmembers. You know, I've seen, I've seen many of the councilmembers, you know, go high and low with the mayor, for the mayor. I just really hope that we can, like I mentioned, we are going to get through this pandemic together. And that is the main thing that I would like to see through either, from either of the mayoral candidates or whoever is going to be mayor next.
Trish on Facebook wants to know, and we'll start with you on this, what distinguishes you from your opponent? How will your office work to ensure that all voices, including hardly-reached populations, are heard?
You know, I think that's probably the most difficult question, is I think when you look at us on paper, we're both young, we're both energetic, we both bring government experience to the job. I think for me is I bring a unique experience of having grown up in public housing and facing many of the challenges that people in our communities face every single day. Fortunately, through education, I was able to overcome those challenges. You know, and, but what I bring to the table is not only those personal experiences, but having worked and engaged at every level of, of government, served on the Neighborhood Board, currently work in the State Senate, worked and lived in Washington, DC, and I continue international advocacy work at, at, at the UN. So I think it's this all-encompassing experience that I bring that's really going to be helpful as we continue to guide our communities during these very unprecedented times.
What do you say to Trish? What's the biggest difference between the two of you?
You know, I'm truly blessed to, you know, be running with, be running with my colleague. And, but I'm also truly blessed to bring those experiences of, you know, my humble beginnings with values from my family members that, you know, worked really hard to, you know, fight for the American dream, if you have it. And I take those, you know, abilities, availabilities, and accessibilities. We always, we, I grew up knowing what it feels like to be ignored or not knowing how to find information or more. And I felt that even going into college. And so what I know is that working at the state legislature, then working at the city council, it's a, it's a whole new world. It's a new beast, if I may say. And, you know, during, especially now in this critical, critical time, you know, I, I am really ready to hit the ground running for this district, to fight for our resources, and have worked on our city budget, and I will continue to build on the relationships that I've committed my career and this, to our community to for the past 10 years. So I'm ready to hit the ground running, hopefully, if elected, next councilmember.
Shannon writes in tonight, what should be built in place of OCCC when it's relocated?
So I believe that OCCC does provide a great opportunity. One, I, I strongly believe that our infrastructure will help us sustain the growth of the future of our district. And I believe that, you know, proper, proper stormwater drains and more and sewer would be a great added addition, but especially for affordable housing and as well as a mixed-use place that, you know, it's right next to the future Kalihii Rail Station. So I'm excited to see shops and the main thing that I want to, I want to say, though, is that I want to make sure that our Kalihii community will have the opportunity to reimagine it together and just make sure that it will keep that component of what we love so much about Kalihii. I would have lived about maybe two streets away from that future Kalihii station. So I'm so, I'm excited for those opportunities and it's something that is a beast in itself on redeveloping OCCC. But I really hope that we can make sure we get that infrastructure set forth.
What do you think should go on that site? It is a very large piece of land.
It is. And I do agree that I think we need to prioritize affordable housing and mixed-use development to also give local businesses the opportunity to thrive. I think the biggest need in our district right now is affordable housing. And what I mean affordable housing is housing that is affordable for local people. When you look at our district, everywhere from Kalihii to the stadium, you see many multi-generational families. And as I've visited thousands of homes over the past 18 months, you know, they say, "We want to have our own home, but it's too expensive." And I think we have an opportunity. Rail presents an opportunity to redevelop our community in a way where we can continue to keep the uniqueness of our district, but also expand and provide opportunities for things like housing, for things like business development. I think infrastructure is going to be a huge part of it. We need to upgrade and improve our infrastructure. But once we figure those things out, we really need to prioritize affordable housing all along the rail line because it's hard. Many of my friends, many of my family are moving away because they can't afford to live here. So as a potential councilmember, providing affordable housing is going to be one of my top priorities.
What do you think the council can specifically do to that end, though? Is it changing regulation? Is it bringing in more private, public-private partnerships, bringing in more developers? I mean, what, what specifically can be done? Because, you know, nobody's going to be anti-affordable housing. Everybody wants to make sure that people have a place to live, but how do we actually get that done?
You know, I, you know, on my website, I published a affordable housing plan. And in that, you know, I look at many different things. But one of the things I think we need to do is we need to incentivize private, private sector investments into these affordable housing projects. When you talk to these developers about, you know, what's so difficult about creating affordable housing project? Their answers range from the permitting process, the process takes too long, the process is, isn't fit for modern times, the cost of land is too expensive, cost to input infrastructure is too expensive. And I think while the city may not be able to lead on every affordable housing project, there's things that they can do. Obviously, I think we need to overhaul the Department of Planning and Permitting and work with the new mayor and work with those in the department to figure that whole process out. I think the second thing we can do is look at available city inventory that we can possibly use for these types of projects. And secondly, I think, you know, if we can look at partnering with the private sector, we, we may not be able to provide a lot due to the fiscal constraints, but if we can help alleviate some of those factors such as putting in infrastructure, improving infrastructure, and even updating some of our zoning laws, I think there's a plethora of things that we can do, but we really need to start looking at those things now.
Okay. What's your take on affordable housing? How do we get more of it?
Absolutely. And that is a key thing that I have worked on with the transit-oriented development. You know, once again, we have eight other rail 21 stations. And those plans, they provide for growth and, you know, supporting our communities so that they can more than just survive, but, you know, as we've mentioned, thrive. And what we can do for affordable housing, and the main thing that we see, especially in our district, from Makalapa to Iwilei, is the kapakahi kind of zoning that we have. And if we really just work on making it uniform, make what, make mixed use, what can be mixed use, so we can really include, included height and density, because there are so many of our neighbors that have the ability to make their apartments. Like, we have a neighbor down in Lower Kalihii who wants to provide units, you know, for, for so many of our families that are struggling. And just working through those zoning and getting those, those restrictions lifted or exemptions and more through the department and going through that checklist, I think we can do that through, we can definitely reach those goals through technology, updating our technology, getting all of that on the same page, and making sure that all of the checklists from all the departments are able to be just structured in a way where everyone can, can look at all the plans all together. So there's so many more things that can be worked on for affordable housing and, but for our district, our zoning really has to be the immediate look at.
Let's talk a little bit about CARES funding. We are hoping that Congress does pass a second round, not anytime soon, but maybe after this election. What are your thoughts as to what the priority should be for the next round of CARES money when it comes to the city's funding?
Yeah, you know, I think one of the things we need to look at is how can we allocate some of those monies to support our small mom, mom-and-pop shops? Our district is very unique in that we have many of those. And many of them are struggling to pay their bills and to survive during this pandemic. So I think providing more business relief to those small mom-and-pop shops is, will need to be important. But I think what we also need to prioritize is how can we invest more into workforce development? Obviously, our terrorism industry isn't going to go back to what it was pre-pandemic anytime soon. So we need to provide opportunities to expand into different economic sectors, provide job trainings for those who are mid-career and wanting to look for a new profession. I think we need to provide more opportunities for that. You know, I think, you know, some of the sectors that we can expand into is agriculture. And one thing that I've particularly been very interested in, in recent months, is looking at the possibility of expanding vertical farming within our district. I think that's one economic sector that could provide a lot of jobs. So hopefully, that we do get a second round of CARES funding and we see more monies allocated for workforce development, as well as putting money into making sure that people have basic needs met.
What are the priorities, do you think, if, if there is another round of CARES funding, where should that money go from the city?
So, yes, definitely. I really hope that we get a second round of CARES funding. And for me, I immediately think of the public health and safety will drive all aspects and all industries and our economy, really. And so if we look to providing the right resources for PPEs so that our, our businesses can go back to work and our employers so that our, our businesses can go back to work and our employers and our, and those, and their employees themselves are able to feel like that they're safe to go to work as well as their, I mean, to provide the services to their customers, whether it be at a school or, you know, at the mom and pop shop or, or even in the warehouses. We need to make sure that we are able to provide those resources. I also want to ensure that we are able to support many of the industries that support our huge industries. So if we think about, you know, the laundry services, if we think about the, the techno, technology, I guess, companies that are in our district, to even our clean energy and how we can make a, really make a sustainable and circular economy to make sure that we are able to provide more jobs and not just for what we have now, but for our future.
You know, both of you talked about wanting to build more affordable housing. Maria on Facebook says, what are your thoughts about gentrification in Kalihii? How do we, you know, upgrade the neighborhood without kicking out the people who, who live there and want to stay?
Yeah, you know, I think first and foremost is as we continue to develop along the rail line that we provide opportunities for housing that is affordable. I think the biggest issue is that people can't upkeep with the increase of the cost of living. You know, so many want to stay in our district, many want to stay in the homes that they grew up in, but they simply can't afford it because options aren't there. So I think prioritizing that development of affordable housing is part of that solution. You know, I look at partners like Commitment Schools that, that have done a great job in outreach into the community, sharing what their plans are for the Kokei area and really prioritizing that they're going to create homes so that local people can live there. You know, so I, I think as, if more options are available at prices that people can afford, then we're going to see more and more of our people living and staying in our district.
What would you say to Maria? What do you think about gentrification in Kalihii?
That's a great question, Maria. And I just want to say that gentrification and the fear of Kalihii not being the Kalihii that we grew up with or in is really real. And that's why so many of people, that's why I truly value, you know, community-originated projects. That's what we have fostered with not just, you know, from our seniors, but also with our, with our future, with the youth from Kalakaua, even in with Liki Liki Elementary to Farrington High School and more. I mean, if we really look at what the council and councilmembers and, you know, neighborhood boards really have that, they have that unique opportunity because they are neighbor to neighbor. They're true grassroots. So we need to allow for that space to come up with those community-originated ideas, projects, and just how they want to see the community benefit from future affordable housing. And if it's from community up, I truly believe that, you know, issues can be addressed, questions can be answered together. So community-originated.
Okay, we have just a few minutes left, so this is our final question for tonight. I know it goes very fast, but we want to know, you know, tell us something that we don't necessarily know on your website. Why, why do you want this job? What, what would you like the viewers to know about you as they head to the ballot box?
I think for me is many of the challenges that I faced growing up are challenges that people in our communities are facing every single day. Things like domestic violence, things like drug abuse, things like not being able to afford basic needs. Those are things that I faced as a child, and those things have had a profound impact on my life. I've dedicated my entire career to public service in making sure that people know that their socioeconomic background will not define the type of person that they will be. And for me, growing up in Kalihii, the place that my family has called home for well over 100 years, it's an honor and it's an opportunity to have the potential to serve. And the reason I'm running is I want to make sure that our children have the chance to live and thrive here.
Okay, same question.
I guess something that you won't see on my website is truly building community has come from the stories and the background of people like my mom. My mom who started a mom and pop shop and helping our neighbors down by Kopkei Street in Kalihii. And, you know, going past, you know, being bullied in school and, you know, trying to make a voice for our community. And that's what, those are the values that I've, I've taken with me. You know, being 30, you know, and starting working in local government at 20, you learn so much on how you can offer assistance. And being a community connector is something that has truly made this, this whole campaign, but especially this whole career worth it. And if there's something that we can do to just make people's lives easier, better, I really want to be that connector for our neighbors.
Okay, well, I want to thank you both, mahalo to both of you for joining us tonight. And we thank the Honolulu City Council District 7 candidates, Radiant Cordero and Jacob Aki. Next week, right here on Insights, we are now two and a half months into the school year. We'll check in to see how educators and families continue to be affected by the pandemic in COVID-19 school in session. I'm Yenji Denise for Insights on PBS Hawaii. Aloha.